We have a public hearing on the budget, and I know some people have figured or filled out forms for a rezoning thing. That will come up under the city council meeting, which will follow the public hearing. So I'd like to open up the public hearing on the budget, and I have three people who've said they want to talk about this. Anyone else could please fill out a little form. Kristy Grassman? Hi, just please state your name, and if you want your address, that's not required.
Kristy Grassman. I own Boomerangs Bar and Grill. Good evening. I'd like to address the council in regards to the proposed budget for 2015-16. A portion of the projected revenue for the city is to be generated by licenses and permits. Included in this is the recently amended fee schedule that will increase liquor license costs to businesses with gaming terminals by $4,752, bringing the total licensing cost to $10,776 annually. According to the proposed budget, city policy is to increase the amount charged for permits and licenses annually, similar to increases in expenses incurred by the city in administrating activities, which is approximate to labor costs. Seeing as how the Illinois Gaming Board oversees all aspects of the gaming industry, there are no costs to the city for allowing gaming terminals and business. Therefore, the video gambling license and permit for each video gambling terminal serves no purpose other than generating revenue for the city. As a business owner in Urbana, I am happy to contribute my fair share, the operative word being "fair." The current Class A liquor license is set at $5,276. With the addition of the G1 video gambling license and permits for the allotted five terminals, this cost is raised to $10,776. This same license in Champagne is $2,400. Bloomington is $2210. Danville is $1375. And Charleston is $1525. In fact, I could purchase liquor license and have gaming terminals in Champagne, Charleston, Danville, Bloomington, and Decatur, and still be $1,300 short of the Urbana liquor license, which, it is to my understanding, is the highest liquor license in the state outside of Chicago's Loop District. I understand that the city has been hit recently with a loss of revenue from the hospital property taxes, and creating new revenue needs to be done. I would just ask that this revenue is spread out more. The food and beverage tax was just increased, and that will affect businesses with liquor license, and to add these fees on is going to make doing business in Urbana increasingly difficult. I would ask that before the city approves the current proposed budget, they would amend the fee schedule to take effect on July 1st and make the appropriate changes to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I do have a question. The ordinance for the fee schedule, 2015-04-041, said that it had been published in a newspaper for at least 14 days. Does anybody know what newspaper that was?
I would imagine it's the News Gazette, and I think we had it on file for 30 days, or maybe even 60 days.
Oh.
Does anyone from Finance know how long it was out?
It was the News Gazette? Okay. Thank you.
You know, at the risk of violating my right to recuse, I would appreciate it if the city would produce proof of the advertisements in the News Gazette, because I've heard from multiple constituents that they never saw a thing, nor did I. So I'd be curious to see if the statute was actually met.
Okay, we will check that out and bring it to the next meeting. Carloon Mills? I can't quite read the first name. Carlton Mills? Is that correct? Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, I front printing in grade school.
Okay.
Many years ago. First of all, your purpose here is to listen to us whine, and I decided to be the anti-whine person and congratulate you on the way you handled the snow and stuff last winter. It was sort of a messy thing, and I heard no complaints, which I thought was rather amazing. So I thought if I'm coming here, I ought to say something good publicly. The big reason, or part of the reason I came here is, not too long ago, I learned that like 20% of the water that is pumped up for the water system disappears. So when they pump up a million gallons, they'll sell 700,000 or 800,000, and then there's 200,000 that have just gone into a bit bucket or something. And I thought that probably it's mainly leaky pipes and possibly poor measurement, but I thought that one of the ways to stop the waste would be to tax it. So you could conceivably create a tax on the amount of water that was pumped up but was not delivered to the customers in the city or the area. So since you're desperate for money, I thought you could have a tax that might be renewable or help preserve the aquifer. And finally, I'm trying to be quick, because you've got a lot of problems. This Saturday night at the Mahi Center down the street on Green Street, we're having Cake Night, and the purpose of Cake Night is to eat cake. And there's no fundraising, no talks, no nothing, just show up and eat cake. And if some of you have a favorite kind of cake you want to bring, bring it. It starts at 7:00, it ends at 10:00. We will have things for the gluten-free and for the diabetics. And some of you have come before, and it's great fun, but I thought, well, I'd announce that and tell you how you can get more money to handle your budget problems, which are, of course, trivial. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Fiedler.
Thanks for your time. I'm going to echo some of Mrs. Grassman's comments as well, and try to plug in some other numbers so that the council can understand why our concerns are being raised. The Illinois Gaming Board has multiple licenses that they oversee. Myself have an operator's license, which allows me to put gaming machines in locations, and then obviously each location has a license as well. The IGB charges me $5,000, and that was the original fee, to do a financial criminal background check, family background check, included fingerprinting, personal interviews, site inspections of my facilities, just to obtain the original license. Annually, the renewal fee is again another $5,000. With that, they do quarterly financial background checks, they do site inspections, they do compliance checks for my policies and procedures. As well on the location sides, there's a $100 annual fee. To do that, they also do site inspections, making sure that there's a line of sight for an age 21 or older employee, for anyone that's using the gaming terminals. They also make sure that their proper signs are posted, the proper licenses are maintained, and those checks are done on a random basis by IGB agents. Scientific Games is another entity that also is in this game. Scientific Games is a separate company that monitors each and every video gaming terminal throughout the state and gives the reports, and I think most of you have probably seen online, they're posted monthly online. For that, they charge about .7275 percent, let's call it three-quarters of a percent. Urbana is getting 5% of the net win, or what income, net income that is generated off the gaming terminals. Calculated based off of the first four months of this year, they should approach, without any increases, a $200,000 tax, a privilege tax, is what it's called, it's what it's called on the state level and everything else, for us to operate and maintain this business. Each of the locations that I own and operate that have five gaming terminals, I have invested in this community and those locations $100,000 each. I understand that the 5% was going to be taken out, but I, and also by IGB rule, I am required to pay half of all license fees that are set on the gaming terminals, or $500 per machine times the 33 machines that I currently operate within the city of Urbana, raising my total to $16,500 for a license fee. I know of no other business in any other community that has no city regulation, cost to the cities to regulate, to control, to oversee, and if you add to that the $17,000 roughly that my company alone will be paying in the privilege tax, it gets you over $33,000 worth of revenue without any cost to the city. My understanding is that a license by law is supposed to be relevant to the cost of administration. And again, Urbana has no cost to administrate video gaming in the city of Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify at the budget hearing? Okay, if there's no one else, I will close the hearing. I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is June 1st, 2015. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Okay, motion by Aaron Ammons, seconded by Eric Jacobson.
Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, I don't think we're going to, well, okay, we'll move on to petitions and communications. And I have, well, I guess I have five people now, and you can either speak now or when the item comes up, so I'll leave that to your discretion. The first is Josh Akry. So you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Josh Akry, and I'm here to oppose the rezoning of the field on Kerr Avenue and any medium to high-density housing. It's my understanding that this is being rezoned for more affordable housing such as Crystal View. How would you feel if this was in your backyard? I don't believe any of you live anywhere near this, Crystal View, and anytime you place higher-density homes in a neighborhood, you lower property values. There's already enough affordable housing in the area, 70 units at Crystal View, and around five Habitat for Humanity homes. And I don't believe you're taking steps to build a healthy mixed-income neighborhood. You're treating, you're creating a new Lakeside or Joanne Dorsey. I and others use Kerr Avenue as a bike route to commute to downtown Urbana and the U of I campus every day. This housing project will create more car traffic to contend with, which I almost get hit every day on Park Street or Broadway. When UC2B was being discussed and debated in city council, one of the selling points was gentrification of the neighborhood, which affordable housing will by no means do. Why don't we focus on providing basic amenities to the already established neighborhoods, such as curbs and sidewalks on Geraldine and Highland Drive, or repairing the sidewalks on Kerr? You can't even push a stroller down there, they're in such bad shape. This side of town has a lot of potential to be great, but we're on a slippery slope to becoming the new southeast Urbana, and I would really like you guys to think about how you're hurting our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Phil Van Ness?
Good evening, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Phil Van Ness. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Weber &amp; Thies, and I'm here on behalf of Cunningham Motors tonight. I'm here on behalf of Cunningham Motors to stand in opposition to ordinance number 2015-06-062, to which the previous speaker just addressed his remarks. I, I'm going to avoid the usual NIMBY dialogue that you often hear in these things, but I'm going to urge you rather to step back from this proposal and give it more thought. And the purpose of my addressing you is this: When I look at the maps and I look at this piece of ground, I see an opportunity, perhaps a lost opportunity, for commercial development. And as a former member of the Champagne School Board, I can tell you, if we'd had a piece of property that we could have gathered acreage up for public purposes or for commercial purposes, we'd have been happier than heck at having the possibility. I look at the zoning map that you are looking at, specifically Exhibit A in the package that was presented, that is before you tonight, and what I see is two strips of land in the middle of what could be a substantial acreage devoted to commercial purposes. I don't think I need to remind you that Urbana could use some more commercial-purposed I didn't see, in the materials that were presented, and I don't mean to diminish the efforts of the Urbana staff that's worked on this, but I didn't see any sign at all of either community support or an effort to develop this property as commercial land. There was no mention of an RFP being put out for the possibility of developing this piece of ground, and when I'm talking about this piece of ground, I'm talking about all the way across Kerr and east of the Cunningham Avenue. There is a substantial-sized piece of land there, and the two strips that we're talking about tonight are on right down the middle of it. So even though it's only a little over an acre or so of land, you're situating it directly in the middle of what is basically seven or eight acres of land that is available, could be made available for commercial development. When the city bought the property 10 years ago, there was no sign, at least in the materials I was given, that there was ever an RFP put out for commercial development. There is no indication, as I said, of community support, and it seems to me that the board would be well-advised tonight, the council would be well-advised tonight, to step back and take another look at the possibility of commercial development of this land. It is too important and too centrally located to not give this serious consideration. The record is devoid of any evidence that there was a serious effort by the city to develop this property commercially, and I submit to you that would be a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Scott?
Hi, I'm Michelle Scott, and I'm in opposition to the rezoning on Kerr Avenue. My husband and I have lived in North Urbana area for 37 years. My husband was born and raised there. I've lived on Barr Avenue and Cunningham Avenue. We have invested our money, time, and energy in North Urbana all these years. We have property directly to the south and directly to the east of these lots. I first want to talk in reference to the process. The city held meetings nine years ago. I attended those meetings, and no one in the area wanted this development. The only ones I heard talk for it were advocates. In most projects, the first step is to request a zoning change. For some reason, in this project, it's the last step, and I would wonder why. The meeting for the planning commission was advertised for June 4th. Five people attended. There are only two board members present. We were told there wasn't a quorum, that the issue would be considered on June 11th. There was no notice except to the five people present, and no information whatsoever. When we attended the June 11th meeting, there was 20 pages of information. No one in the area had any idea that the project had gone as far as it had. And suddenly, a vote was required. It couldn't be postponed for more consideration. The developer had to meet a date, apparently the city meeting. So here we are for a city vote. The Kerr area is currently affordable neighborhood, the type of neighborhood I would think the city would want to promote and preserve. Have you visited the area? The majority of the area are single-family homes, homes that are kept up. Adding 33 units on the property is going to destroy the area slowly. These units are on top of the number of units at Crystal View and University Park Apartments. The additional traffic alone is going to be detrimental. The lighting, noise, and dumpsters, while they're not going to help. People live here, raise families here, and put their life savings here. The city says that our property values will rise. When have home values ever risen next to dense housing? A housing project next to a single-family home never helps out our property values. This is not a dilapidated area. There are not, the projects, they're not homes that are empty and rundown. It's not, it's going to be harder to sell our homes, to rent our homes. I have homes that I rent out on Barr Avenue. I have tenants that have been there 14 years, five years, eight years. It's a quiet, well-kept street. I doubt it'll remain quiet much longer. They propose a road immediately behind it, along with two-story apartment buildings, and the lighting and dumpsters and noise that go with it. Nine years ago, when I was attending the city meetings, they told me the new concept in affordable housing was not a dense housing project. They said that affordable homes needed to be spread throughout the community. They said that this concept would build a community spirit and avoid the problems that come with dense housing. Yet, we see a proposal vote for 33 units right next to Crystal View. It seems that the city is doing the same old thing and expecting a different outcome. I'm asking you to vote against the proposed zoning change tonight. I believe you should preserve the area as it is, and that the city could do something more beneficial with the lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Riordanz?
I'm Deb Riordanz. I'm the president of Clark Lindsay Village in Urbana, and I'm here in support of ordinance 2015-06-060 and 061, which would update our planned unit development plan. Clark Lindsay's 40-year history predates the terms that we're all familiar with now: assisted living, memory care, even active aging. And the roots of Clark Lindsay's establishment was one of innovation. We are one of the state's first continuing care retirement communities. Now we are moving forward with plans to continue that innovative tradition and live out our mission statement to support wellness in mind, spirit, and body for all the older adults we serve. The first will be an aquatic and wellness center, which will be focused on preventative health, and also social health as well, and rehabilitative health. And the second is an extension of our long-term care offerings in what's called a small-home model, which we hope will help lead the way and find a new and better way to serve our elders in their final years. And with those expansions of our campus within our corner, we'll be looking to fulfill our long-term vision, not only for the founders of Clark Lindsay, but for our elders' desire to reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question here from Charlie.
Deb, thanks. As you know, I'm pretty familiar with the area there. The houses on the plan are labeled "greenhouse," and there's a third one that's "future." What is that third one? You just mentioned what are, I assume, are going to be in the first two?
Right. So the plans are to build the first two small homes, and then there is available land and planning for a third home when we're ready for that, so.
And the third home will be for?
Same, same thing. Assisted living or skilled care, working to, in the long-term care section of our campus.
You know, my biggest concern is, you know, since I'm a regular up-and-down race street there, that, that's an oil and chip street, you know, down to, past the bridge, and at some point, we probably should upgrade the quality, at least down to the entrances to Meadowbrook Park's west parking lot there. Would Clark Lindsay be at all in position to help with that construction if we could ever identify some money?
I, I can't speak to whether we would have the resources available, but we do have a desire for the improvement of the road, so I would welcome discussion about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Madigan, first?
I just want to tell you, as a regular visitor to your facility, my wife's grandmother lives there. A huge asset, you are a huge asset to the city of Urbana, and I just congratulate you on the quality of your facility.
Thank you very much. Dennis Roberts?
The green buildings, they're called green buildings, but that seems to be like a, kind of an odd apt-up for them. You've explained them a little bit more than I understood. I guess I didn't understand what they were going to really be doing. These, they look like larger facilities than just a single home, of course. These are going to be like apartments, or are these going to be healthcare centers where you have beds for patients?
Well, they will be residents of the home, and there'll be private rooms for each, so each home will be the, for 12, 12 elders. And there'll be staff, care staff there to provide the assistance required. And the reason for the greenhouse is, the greenhouse is a national partnership who have really advanced the movement of small homes across the nation. Illinois is a little, little slow to the gate to introduce them, and we're working with the regulators to update regulations to allow, allow that sort of setting. But greenhouse is not, to be confused with where plants grow, but where the residents we serve continue to grow and thrive, so.
And so the rooms are more like apartments, like studio apartments?
They're studio, they're single, single rooms, private baths, private bedroom, and then a common area where meals are served around a family-style table.
And what then, what kind of a feature then includes aquatic, you said aquatic therapy? How does that work in? Is that, is there going to be an indoors pool in the building?
In our main building, there will be a pool, so that, that will be separate from the small house expansion.
Oh.
And it'll be attached near the front entryway of Clark Lindsay. So it'll have an indoor pool and fitness centers designed for seniors in mind.
But that, that development isn't part of this request, is that correct?
It is. It's an extension of this.
It is.
Of our existing PUD.
I see there's two pieces here. Okay.
Yep, right, in the, in the same request.
My, you said that this is a national movement for small group homes. This is the first in Illinois, is that correct?
Well, we would be the first greenhouse development off of federal land, so.
Okay. Charlie?
Yeah, that reminded me of a couple of things to mention. I echo Mike's sentiments completely. The, how are your existing residents reacting to, I know you've already built, you know, four new units there, and they quickly sold, I think. They're all, they're all full now, right? Or is there one left?
One left.
One left, okay. Going, going fast. It's amazing, one's left. What's the reaction to that building and this additional expansion by the residents?
The residents have been very supportive of the projects, and we've been, they've been involved in the, the planning and some of the focus groups, and in the small homes development, which will interrupt some green space that they're used to. We've done a lot of work to preserve as many trees and as much as that could. We've done a lot of work to preserve as many trees and as much of that green space as we can. They're very excited about the future of Clark Lindsay.
Yeah, and so the follow-up question there is, you know, it's pretty, you know, pretty much you're going to run out of, sort of, buildable land without really impacting the green space that you have. At what point do you look to go, going vertical?
I don't know. We still have green space to go, so.
Okay, because constituent number one has requested a, a taller building there with a view to the sunset and the sunrise, just so you know.
I will keep that in mind, thank you.
Eric.
Of course, a tall building with a view only works as long as there's only one tall building. That's the idea.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Bishop King James Underwood does not wish to speak, but for the record, is still concerned about the sewer problem. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we will move on. Unfinished business, I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with tonight. So reports of standing committees. Committee of the whole. Eric Jacobson.
Yes. So on behalf of the Committee of the whole, I, I move passage of ordinance number 2015-06-059 and ordinance ascertaining prevailing wages.
Second. Motion by Eric Jacobson, seconded by Aaron Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Well, I'll vote yes, because the state law requires it, but I think the free market ought to actually determine wages.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the Committee of the whole, I move passage of resolution number 2015-06-029R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium subrecipient agreement with Habitat fiscal year 2014-2015.
Second.
Motion by Eric Jacobson, seconded by Diane Marlin. Any discussion? Bill Brown.
Just wanted some clarification on what that means for the TBRA money that we originally scheduled. Is this using some of that money? Is there anybody to talk about that?
Libby Tyler will talk about that.
I think originally, we had scheduled this same money for, to go to the Regional Planning Commission for the No Limits program. Is that right?
Is this the same?
Or part of that same money?
I think it's, I think it's money, I think it's actually, it's a TBRA program. Okay. Yeah, we're, we're trying to cover for our home coordinator vacancy, and the TBRA program didn't meet all the requirements of the home, some of the funds, so we've had to reallocate in order to meet our deadline of allocations for HUD. However, we're still supporting TBRA. I think it's just a matter of spending all the money that we need to, to meet the ratio for HUD. Sorry, I don't have a more complete answer. If Jenna were here, she would go.
Yeah, I just remember there was, there was a waiting list for that program, and that was one of the reasons we had designated money for that, so I'm wondering, I, I hope we can fill that gap in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, we're, we're still supporting that program.
Okay.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the Committee of the whole, I move passage of resolution number 2015-06-028R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Urbana Park District for construction and maintenance of an eight-foot-wide sidewalk across Crystal Lake Park.
Motion by Eric Jacobson, seconded by Charlie Smythe. Any discussion? Mr. Madigan.
Yes, I'm just curious about the Park District's urge to cover a whole lot more green space with concrete. How many trees are going to be cut down in the city of Urbana for this eight-foot-wide meandering sidewalk?
There's a handful of trees that will be cut down, but I'd say the vast majority will be saved. The handful that are cut down are actually invasive species trees, that they do desire to get those, those removed. They're right near Kerr Avenue. The path, though, does parallel the road north of Kerr so that it can keep some white oaks alive and not touch those.
So the Park District is saving the good trees and getting rid of the bad trees?
Basically, yes. And then, we're, they, they desire to meander the path around several trees so we could keep those.
Part of the reason I sound a little bit adversarial right now is because you and I sat in a meeting of the Traffic Commission with the Park District a few months ago, where they were absolutely obstinate in their consideration of a little bit of parking space south of the pavilion in King Park. Absolutely obstinate. It was ridiculous. And we had a couple of lovely ladies who live at the end of that Hammerhead Drive, who talked about repeated obstruction of their driveways because of the pavilion that the, that the Park District, according to the official who was at the Traffic Commission, didn't, they weren't for it until apparently they were for it and built it. They opposed it until they were for it. And there's no parking for it. So these folks blocked their driveways. These are some elderly African-American women, very lovely ladies, who came and were very concerned about their well-being if an ambulance had to come into their, into their vicinity. So here we have a Park District who's willing to pave over god knows how many hundreds or thousands of square feet, but they can't help out the city when we come and ask them to pour a two or three or four or maybe five parking spaces in King Park to facilitate the pavilion they built on their property when they were for it after they were against
One thing I wanted to note was Mr. Ammons had inquired about a shelter down near Stebbins and Broadway. I contacted the MTD and asked them about, just to confirm, about a shelter. They looked at their boardings. They don't feel the boardings are really high enough to warrant a shelter. They did think a pad, a concrete pad that we're going to provide, and the Park District will put a bench there, would be a nice amenity. So at this time, they're not looking at a shelter. So I just wanted to relay that to you.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Eric.
It's not exactly germane to this resolution, but, but I wanted to pick up a little bit on, on what Mr. Madigan said, and just ask, maybe this is a question for the attorney. Do we, can we ever initiate, can the city initiate a discussion on an issue like parking on Park District property? Is that, is that an initiative that we could, could take and approach the Park District about, should we wish to?
In terms of pursuing a possible agreement with the Park District and intergovernmental agreement, absolutely. That doesn't necessarily mean they'll accept our recommendations, but it's certainly worth opening a dialogue.
So there, so there would be a path to revisit that, that particular issue, and maybe, 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 you know, on consideration, it'd be a more reasonable response.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we could revisit it, but it was an absolute non-starter at Traffic Commission, which is where it would have to, to start, to come to the commission, to come to the council. But they were just, it was just rejected out of hand, even though there were safety concerns among residents, you know, because there was no parking for the facility. So I'm sure we could revisit it, but I think because it was such a non-starter the last time, I don't envision any kind of different outcome if we would approach it again. I mean, I, I don't know. I just, I find it a bit ironic that we're, no, it's not ironic, don't get me wrong. In, in, in my own mind, I have a very difficult time with this, having sat through some legitimate concerns of a couple of Urbana residents in, in wanting to relieve the congestion at their dead-end street, and the, the Park District had no interest in resolving that problem because they didn't want to cover up more, more green space. Now they're totally willing to cover up thousands of square feet of green space for their own, for their own benefit.
If the Traffic Commission recommended it to the city council, then the city council could ask the Park District.
Sure, and they would still say no, because they're just...
Well, we don't know. I mean, people change their minds, right?
Okay, well, you know what? I'm more than willing to try that, because the way, the way it was put to, put to me was, from the Park District representative, and to the, to the Traffic Commission was, it was an absolute non-starter.
Well, I think they have a precedent here.
Well, and if we hold this, then maybe they'll have more of a, of a desire.
Right, exactly. So.
Anyway, I'm with, I mean, it doesn't pertain to this vote, but I would be completely supportive of revisiting that particular parking issue with the Park District.
Charlie.
Yeah, this particular issue raises its ugly head every so many years. You know, I think we've all heard about it. When I've, when I've gone canvassing in that neighborhood, I've got, I've heard about it, and I know Bill Gray was asked to, to address it with additional signage several years ago, and, and, you know, and, and it's still not solved. So how do you have a park without adequate parking, you know, for the use of a facility like that? So I, I think we probably just need to reestablish dialogue with them.
Libby, would you like to say something?
Yes, we do meet regularly, the staff meets regularly with the Park District staff, and, and a number of topics, and this has come up in other locations where there's a deficit of parking in the neighborhood parks. One thing that we're looking forward to is working more closely with the Park District and the School District in some of these issues that come up where there's joint interest in the different parks. An example, we recently met with some neighbors adjacent to Lowman Park. Were concerned about connections there, and were able to bring those groups together, School District, Park District, the neighbors, and the city, kind of, being a facilitator for that discussion, to look at those connections. That was fruitful discussion. We have been working with the Park District on King Park. We helped previously on those two cul-de-sac situations. I have asked many times about accommodation for parking to the neighborhood. Currently, the idea and the philosophy is that there's joint parking with the School District. It's not convenient to all parts of the park, however, but we would be happy at the staff level to reopen the discussion and see if there's not a, a joint resolution that might be made. Also, I've noted that on the, on Lincoln Avenue, there's the vacant old nursing home there, and park users are parking there. When that gets redeveloped, that parking will no longer be available. So I think that we have a structure set up where engineering, or Bill Gray, myself, Mike Monson, and other folks working with the Park District directly, so I think that might be a good initial avenue to take.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, and then Diane.
Yeah, just real quickly, it's my understanding that, that this project, and that is the whole Broadway brick removal and repaving is, is, is scheduled to go out for bid next week, if, if possible. So to me, it's for construction this year, right? Yeah, so, so sympathetic as I am to holding this thing up in some way, I think trying to exert our influence in other ways is probably going to be the more prudent thing, rather than hold up a whole big project, so.
Diane.
Well, I usually don't like to digress into side topics, but I also was in a Traffic Commission meeting where this very issue came up, and the problem is the Park District put a pavilion close to the end of that Hammerhead, and when you're carrying a cooler and, and a bunch of supplies, you want the shortest distance between two points, so you park as close as you can. So the Park District created the problem, and they really do need to fix it by providing at least some, several parking areas where people can pull in and at least drop off all their stuff and then go park somewhere else. But, but really, if the pavilion's there, people are going to want to be as close as they can, because they're hauling a lot of stuff, and it shouldn't be hard to fix it.
Dennis.
Yes, I said on the Traffic Commission before, Mr. Madigan did, and this came up numerous times, and I think we tried different kinds of striping, no parking, limited parking, we, all kinds of signs. We actually talked to them about having some kind of a loop that go, that went into the park and came back out again, but that was never built. It might be that the residents are asking the wrong commission to have help, and instead of coming to the Traffic Commission, even though there's a street parking problem, maybe the residents would get farther along if they attended the park board meetings, because sometimes the members of the park board meetings, which are really members of this community, are more sympathetic and have a different kind of ear than the administrators who are drafting plans and perhaps enforcing the general Park District rules. So I think there'd be a lot more, I think you would go farther, and you might build bridges to solve situations. It's possible that the pavilion could be moved, or some other, you know, I mean, there's a lot of ways of moving things around or changing reality, and the Park District is constantly reinventing the parks.
Okay. Aaron has something.
Can we call a question, please?
Yes. All right, we have a motion by Eric, seconded by Charlie. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. That topic is not dead, however.
No, it is not.
Okay. Reports of special committees. I don't think we have any reports of officers. Any reports of officers? Okay. New business. Ordinance number 2015-06-060, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for a planned unit development at 101 West Windsor Road, Clark Lindsay Village. Kevin Garcia.
Okay, I believe we'll be hearing these two, two cases, the preliminary and the final PUD cases, at the same time. I can explain why we're recommending that in my introduction. Okay, so this is an application by Clark Lindsay Village for preliminary and final approval for a residential mixed-use planned unit development, which would allow for three one-story residential buildings to be constructed, as well as some additions to existing buildings, including that indoor pool that was mentioned earlier. The applicant is also requesting two waivers to be granted, one of which would allow narrower streets than required. I'm going from 26 feet, which we require, down to 25 feet, and also parking in the required front yard setback. Hold on one second. There we go. There we go. Okay, so this property, as I'm sure many of you are aware, is pretty large. It's about 27 acres, and it's located on the corner, southeast corner of Windsor Road and Race Street. I mean, if you look on your monitors, the area that the residential buildings would be going is where I'm putting the handover right now. And then there'd be some additions to buildings up in this area to the main building. This site has been developed in accordance with previous PUD approvals in 1973 and recently in 2013. Because the preliminary PUD for this portion of the site technically expired a couple decades ago, and the site plan has changed, they're requesting both preliminary and final approvals at this time. And considering that the preliminary and final PUD applications are building off of prior approved PUDs, we feel that addressing, or that hearing both these cases concurrently is appropriate, and that's the same process that was followed back in 2013 for those PUDs for the northeastern part of the site. The Urbana Plan Commission held a couple of public hearings on this, first on May 21st. We did not have a quorum, so we had a special meeting on June 11th, just last Thursday, and after a pretty brief discussion, the Plan Commission voted seven to nothing in favor of recommending approval to the City Council. Now, compared to previous approvals, the current proposal is similar to the preliminary development plans that were approved back in 1973, which included townhouse units in this corner of the property. Now, the types of units have slightly changed, so they're going to be this greenhouse type of building, but essentially, the initial plan called for residential in this area, and that's what this is calling for. The street layout is slightly different than was in the initial plans, which are in Exhibit I, which basically had a loop road on the site. Sorry, I'll try not to make people dizzy going through here, but, okay. Ah, there you go. Okay, so the initial site plan, let me zoom in on that. Sort of had this, had an access coming off of Race, and then sort of, I guess it had a couple of cul-de-sacs, so it didn't actually connect through. And then the current proposal would actually connect, connect to, let's do this one. Okay, you see where the road, where the road would be going, connecting to Race and then coming up, connecting with the villas that were just built, and then eventually out to Windsor up there. So slightly different street layout. We find that the use for residential assisted care units would be compatible with what's already there and with the adjacent land uses, the zoning and the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan, by the way, identifies the area of the site as Clark Lindsey Village, so it's certainly consistent with that. Also meets numerous goals, at least nine by our count, numerous goals of plan and many of the objectives of the comp plan as well. As for the waivers that are requested, as I mentioned, the street width that we require for private streets with no parking along the sides is 26 feet. And after initially proposing a private street that would be 21 feet wide, in an effort to preserve some of the old large trees on-site, to calm traffic and to create a more pedestrian-friendly and safer walking environment, after consulting with city staff, the applicant agreed to widen the streets due to some concerns from the fire department and Public Works, to widen those to 25 feet wide, which is still one foot narrower than required, but city staff is supportive of this waiver request. In addition, the other waiver is for parking in a required front yard. And in the R3 district, parking in required front yards is prohibited, but the applicant is requesting a waiver to allow that, and they have agreed to install landscape buffer to screen the parking from Race Street. The parking would be consistent with what is already existing along Race Street in this, in the area to the north with the garages and with the other parking. Staff is also supportive of this waiver request. The Urbana zoning ordinance outlines nine general goals for planned unit developments, which are spelled out on page seven in the memo. I will not read all of those to you here, but we find that the proposed expansion of Clark Lindsey Village would be consistent with seven out of those nine goals. Zoning ordinance also outlines requirements for a PUD, which are detailed, again, in the memo. Briefly, I will run through the criteria for approval for PUDs with some brief explanations. Some, the first criterion is that the proposed development is conducive to the public convenience at that location. We find that the proposal is conducive to the public convenience, and that it will expand the housing types that Clark Lindsey is able to offer the community, will also allow the new residents to take advantage of all of the existing amenities that are on-site. Second is that the proposal will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the surrounding areas, or injurious or detrimental to the public welfare. We find that it will not be injurious or detrimental to the surrounding area or the public welfare. It will have to meet all the requirements, or all the city regulations, except in cases where waivers are approved. Number three is that the proposed development is consistent with the Urbana comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, it meets no fewer than nine of the goals of the comprehensive plan and many of the objectives. Number four is that the proposed development is consistent with the purpose and goals of Section 13.3 of the Urbana zoning ordinance. Again, that's consistent with seven out of the nine goals of that section, which is the PUD section of the ordinance. And finally, number five, that the proposed development is responsive to the relevant recommended design features identified in the PUD section of the ordinance. I won't go through all of these, but they are listed and described in brief on page 11 of the memo. But some design features that these proposals have are internal connectivity, a lot of tree preservation and street trees, open space provisions, and passive and active recreation. So that concludes my report. With respect to both cases, the City Council can either approve as submitted, can approve including any conditions, or you can deny as submitted. Staff, as well as the Urbana Plan Commission, by, as I said, the vote of seven to zero in favor, recommend that City Council approve the proposed development plans, subject to the conditions that construction be in general conformance with the general site plan as attached in Exhibits D/ E, and with the detailed site plan dated 5/15/2015 as attached in Exhibit F. These site plans that are mentioned are in the draft ordinances you have, so you don't have to go rooting through for those other exhibits, and they are in the draft ordinances.
Okay, Diane?
I move approval of ordinance number 2015-06-060.
I'll second.
A motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance number 2015-06-061. This is the final development plan. Is there a motion on that?
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now, we're at ordinance number 2015-06-062, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Urbana, Illinois, and this is a request by the zoning administrator to rezone a 1.36-acre parcel generally located south of Kerr Avenue between Division Avenue and Cunningham Avenue from B3 General Business Zoning District to R4 Medium Density Multiple Family Residential Zoning District. And I do have public input from Gerald Persley, who is opposed to this, but he does not wish to speak. Okay, so who wants to start on this? Libby?
I'd like to give an introduction before Matt presents the zoning case, a little bit of the background, the history, and for this, I have my community development hat on, more than the zoning, which Matt will cover. Just some of the background on the property. Those of you who've been on council for a while will know some of this, but maybe not the whole story, but this proposal is one that has been supported by three or four councils, and now the second mayor, and it's something that we've anticipated in our comprehensive plan and our consolidated plan, and we've been setting aside dollars in our annual action plan for a number of years. Story goes back to, I don't have the exact date, but it was the early to mid 2000s when the city bought these properties. We almost bought the additional two lots to the east on Kerr Avenue, but Mr. Scott beat us to it, and it was always envisioned as a housing development, and Kerr Avenue has always been envisioned as a residential street. In 2006, we held a charrette. We had an architecture firm that specialized in ecological design. Our view at that time, our hope at that time, would be to develop an ecological, sustainable community that was also affordable. So that was a high goal of the council at that time. We looked to foreign associates to do the neighborhood charrette, which Mrs. Scott was recalling, and came up with some, a couple of different options on the layout, and that helped us develop, actually, the first of two requests for proposals. And the first selected developer, I was just recalling some of this, was EcoLab, which was formerly a Chodo, and they specialized in super passive house construction. However, this particular project was really beyond the capacity of the organization, and we went out again for RFPs, and in 2011, we selected Brynshaw and Homestead. And Brynshaw is the developers that successfully redeveloped Crystal View Townhomes, the old Lakeside Terrace, which is adjacent to this property and was one of the reasons why they were so interested in this particular property. And Homestead is the local Chodo who was their partner on Crystal View, is their partner on Crystal View, and their partner in this particular endeavor. Since 2011, Brynshaw has made, I think, three or four applications to the state for funding, the necessary funding for development of this type from the Illinois Housing Development Authority. At this point, the proposal has changed, and it's very fundable, and we're very optimistic and positive. And what has changed since the last submittal is that the housing authority has been able to enter into the partnership that we've been working on, to offer nine VASH vouchers. These are Veterans Affairs for Supportive Housing vouchers. This will be nine units along the west side of the property that will be set aside for veterans who need supportive housing. It's a fantastic opportunity to serve this portion of our population with their housing needs and their supportive housing needs. Rather than a playground in this current iteration, there's a community gardens, which will be beneficial to the veterans, as well as to the families that will have a single-family townhouse-style development on the east side. The development would connect to Crystal View Townhomes, so residents would be able to use the playground and the community center at Crystal View Townhomes. So why is a property split zone that the city owns? We've had the majority of the site zoned R4, and then these two slivers on the east, Zone B3. And I actually, this was one of the first cases I worked on when I came to the city 15 years ago, there was a gentleman who lived at that location and also had a contractor business at the same time. And at that point, he would have been able to continue to live there and do his small construction company. He did fencing, was one of the things that he did, so it really fit the needs of the gentleman who owned the property at that time. We had perceived that this might develop under a PUD, such as the one that you just heard. However, the development has been laid out such that we believe it fits squarely within the R4, which is our lowest multiple-family zoning category. We're poised to submit, we finished kind of the preliminary round from the state where they say, yes, you're eligible to submit a full application for the competitive tax credits, and that is required to go in quite soon, and the split zoning is seen as an impediment. So even though the comprehensive plan and our plans and the council goals and all these actions that we've taken have been anticipating the mixed-income nature of the development, we have this small area of the business zoning that's been a relic. We think it will really be necessary for the application, and as we see for lots of applicants that can be forced with split zoning, it's an impediment. So we'd like to remove that impediment of the split zoning. I would just note for the neighborhood, you know, this would be mixed income, that's a requirement of the funding, should be a range of incomes, not low income, although some of the units would be affordable for persons with lower incomes. The Crystal View Townhomes has been a very successful redevelopment. We would see the same developer, same architect, same management, and this development's been very successful, especially for those who've been around for a while will remember the problems that we had at the old Lakeside Terrace, to take something that was, at that time, the highest crime location, again, when I first started with the city, to one that we really don't experience those problems. We would certainly work with the developer to make sure that there's proper buffers from the surrounding neighborhoods. We looked, when we were planning the site, at potential for connection south. Is there a way to connect to the road system along Bar? And really, that's a relic of earlier development patterns. There's topographic changes, there's property ownership, that trying to connect this development to the properties to the south would result in a take. And our fire department and our city engineer have been comfortable for a number of years with this level of development feeding off of one access off of Kerr Avenue with these 33 lots. See if there's anything else. You know, it's taken a lot longer than we thought it would to get to this point, and, you know, we did the early planning, we did the annual exercise, we have been seeking funding, two developer selections, and it's just still a shock to some of the neighbors, but of course, we'll continue to work with the neighborhood as hopefully we move forward into the design and the construction of the project. Those are my introductory remarks.
Libby, the people who spoke against this were concerned about Crystal View bringing down the value of the neighborhood. Is there any evidence of that?
We haven't seen any evidence of that. You know, what's the highest and best use of a property? It's vacant. That is not, doesn't help the community to have just a vacant, unused property. I think commercial, additional commercial development on a residential street is not, would not be good for those owning residential. So this is a moderate-density residential development of a high quality, and I can't say that it would increase the property values, but I certainly don't think it would be detrimental. It would add more people to the neighborhood, more livelihood, and I think it would be beneficial to the neighborhood.
I don't know who's first here, how about Diane?
I just had a couple of questions. I'm having trouble understanding, will these be sold as individual units? So people will purchase a one-bedroom unit- So people will purchase a one-bedroom unit or a two-bedroom unit, is that correct?
No, no. There was one time when we thought we could do homeownership, and that was before the recession, these will be rental. Just like, just like Crystal View Townhome, these would be rental units, but a lower density, about half the density of Crystal View Townhomes.
So the reference to affordable owner occupied homes does not apply on page one of the memo.
I, is, we have our, one of our developers is here. Is that something we're still trying to achieve with this property? Erin, this is Erin from Homestead.
That was part of our early concept for the, for development way back in two thousand.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry, that was part of our original concept for the development way back in two thousand and eleven. We found that market, market conditions weren't really such that we could make that work. And getting tax credit funding for the development with the existing number of rental units was proving to be very difficult. We weren't being, we weren't able to score highly enough on our applications to really make that work for us. And we found that if we could increase the number of rental units on the site, it would improve our chances.
So Bryn Shore will own all the buildings?
Yes, they will be the majority owner, yes, which is the same situation with Crystal View.
So you pay property taxes?
Yes.
Okay. So what is the rent, the range in rents for these?
I believe in the packet you received, there might have been, no. The, the rents will range, the rents will be set by the maximum home rents. So that will range from thirty percent of the area median income up to sixty percent of the area median income. The exact rent would vary depending on the number of bedrooms in each unit. I can't give you those numbers off the top of my head, but I could send those to council if they.
So they wouldn't necessarily, you're not comparing rents to what's in the neighborhood, it's compared to the.
I mean, there will, there will be a market study and there would be some adjustment of rents so that, you know, the, so that, you know, it would be economically feasible for us. But we are, we would be operating on a certain maximums in terms of rent because it is a low-income housing tax credit funded project.
And the parcel that's between this development and Crystal View, what is the plan for that?
Well, they're, they're adjacent on the corner. There are some homes on the east side of Division that are still in private ownership. And it would be nice someday to make that part of the larger project, but those have not been available.
So the empty, the empty, looks like an empty field at this point, is, is going to stay vacant?
Well, no, there's, there's an area that is set aside as a community garden. The, the, I believe you're referring to this area here?
Yeah, wow.
That's actually the back of the single-family lots that are privately owned. We don't, you know, it's a conceptual drawing, so it doesn't show the actual structures that are on that area. Those are, those are the, those are the backyards of the, the four properties that are along Division Street.
Well, I'm going to join in with Diane here, so, so on our map.
We'll all take turns, please.
Well, yeah, no, I'm with her here. So the, the one point three six is marked, no, it's marked right here. She's talking about the almost equivalent, actually larger area to the immediate.
Can I call a point of order here so that we can maintain order in the meeting? I believe that each of us should be called upon by the chair of the meeting before we just start talking.
But I think it would facilitate efficient use of our time if we would just clarify the point that she's talking about.
So a point of order has been called and you, sir, are out of order.
Well, I was about to ask that question.
Go right ahead.
Because I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the aerial map, not the schematic drawing. So I'm, and it's, it's labeled government-owned, so I assume there will be development. It's part of the, is it part of this development?
Yes, it is, yes.
So the entire, even though just that narrow part is hashed, the entire.
Well, the, the parts that are hashed are the parts that the zoning will be changing.
Okay.
The, the parcel next to it is already R four.
Okay.
And that's part of the Kerr Avenue, that's part of the old Kerr Avenue.
So that will fill it, okay, that's what I wasn't clear on.
And that's really the main point, is that we want to have the zoning of those two thin parcels on the east side conform with the rest of the site.
And then my last question is, have the police calls for service to Crystal View been out of, out of the normal or higher than what would be expected?
No, no, we have, there have been very few problems at the site. And in fact, our management of that site has been held up as an example to other, other affordable housing developments in the community who have been having problems in terms of sort of management practices that could be used, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also like to say that we contacted the police department about that question. And the calls to Crystal View Townhomes are, as you mentioned, not out of the ordinary for other housing developments in the area. They're very average.
Okay, Dennis Roberts?
Yeah, certainly we've watched the attempt to, to develop this tract of land for years. And the concept has changed quite a bit. And in the, in the layout has changed, I guess, two or three times at least. I think what I kind of rather like about the newest plan, and I think maybe which will have the least amount of impact for the neighborhood on Division Road, is that it looks like the buildings that are going to be built along the west edge of this developmental area, which are indicated to be for veteran homes, housing?
Yes, yes.
Are all single-story buildings and they are duplexes with green space around them. So they do look much more like your typical duplex or single-family home. And they, they'd rather do make a better job of blending into the residential houses on Division Street whose backyard's above them. So the, the more dense section is actually closer to Cunningham Avenue. And that seems appropriate. And I think it's a good way of segueing in from this development into the neighborhood at large. There's only about four or five houses or plots of land on Division that are below or south of Kerr. So there's not too much friction, I think, to the neighborhood itself. So I think this is actually one of the better plans that I've seen drafted for this section of land that the city's owned for so long. So I'll support it as it is shown here.
Bill Brown?
Yeah, a few questions. First, why R four and not R three? It seems like every building is either single-family or duplex. So are there other setback requirements that?
Not in particular. R four was just sort of chosen as something that would, we thought would generally support the proposal. It's also, as I would note, Libby, go ahead, if you want to jump in.
I didn't want to get in the way of Matt presenting his report that he has. I was trying to do introductory remarks, I apologize. And R four is the lowest multi-family zone, so the R two, R three wouldn't allow this configuration?
Even though every building is either one or two units?
They're attached. It's, it's just, R four is the lowest zone that you can do this pattern.
Okay. And then I'm real concerned about connectivity. I know during the plan commission meeting, there were worries about people already cutting across the, the field and over fences or through fences. And we've run into that same problem at other areas, like along the railroad track at Lerman Neighborhood, where there's just no way for now seventy-plus, twenty, or thirty-three more, a hundred units to get to the southeast toward Walgreens, McDonald's, Arby's. They really have to either go clear over to Broadway and come back around, or they have to go way uphill to Kerr and come back around, Kerr, Kerr, however you say that, come back around. And there's just absolutely no way to get over to Cunningham. So I think we really need to try to at least get the property, first one north of the creek, to make a walking path extended from Stebbins would help a lot to get those people through. And then there'll be, there'll be the indicated connecting pathway between the two developments. But even better would be if there would be a way to get to, to the east end of Bar Avenue somewhere, get one of those properties. And they're all owned with, with two, two landowners, basically, besides the city. Cunningham Motors and Mr. Scott, I think, own most of those. So I'd hope we'd be able to work with them and try to make some connectivity so you don't have them cutting across. I know that all the units along Bar Avenue are really well-kept. I congratulate them for taking very good care of those properties and landscaping Bar Avenue, I assume. I don't know if the city did that or if you guys did that, but it looks great. For a small, for a small, short street, I think it's, it's very well-kept. So I think the connectivity is, is a big issue. And I don't know if, I assume we'll get some other plans before we, I mean, this is just the rezoning we're doing here. Whether it be, we'll have to have financing or something, we'll, we'll have to vote on at some point, right?
Yeah, on the connectivity, I wanted to mention that Bryn Shore actually has provided a big link. This was added to their plans along the Saline, the north side of the Saline. There's a sidewalk that didn't previously exist, gets very close to Cunningham. So they've provided like ninety-one hundredths of, of the link that's needed to improve the connectivity. There are different, there's different ownerships and there's grade, and those are the obstacles. But if you look along the north side, along south side, between Stebbins Drive and the Saline, and there's just one parcel short of that connection, and that would add to the east-west links and north-south, if you come through this development.
Okay. And then as, as far as the two remaining vacant lots that are commercial, I think Cunningham also, Cunningham Motors also owns those. I hope they realize that all of that is in a TIF district and any kind of proposal they would bring, I'm sure that the city would be real supportive. They could, we're refunding hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to a lot of Cunningham property owners and Five Points and all along there. So I'm sure if you want to develop that commercially, there are opportunities. So as far as the TIF goes, one of the properties that we're rezoning was also in a TIF. Is that anything that has to be detached or legally dealt with?
TIF's already established.
But we don't have to detach it, even though we're going to convert it into something? Would we be able to use TIF money to maybe purchase a property to improve connectivity there?
Potentially.
Okay. I think that's it for now, thanks.
Charlie?
I was just gonna, I'd like to hear Matt's report, but I was going to extend the, the issue. R two, R three, R four, aren't the floor area ratios essentially the same at point five in all three of those? Or is, or is R four a little higher?
The floor area ratio, I can pull that up pretty quick, but it, for R four, it is a little bit higher. For R four, the FAR, the maximum FAR is point five. For R three, it's point four. And for R five, it jumps up to point nine.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion? Oh, sorry.
That's fine. Well, we've covered a lot of what I was going to mention, so I'll keep this, I'll keep this very brief. As the mayor said, this is a one point three-six acre parcel, I think we're, we're very familiar with the area right now. The, the proposed R four zoning would bring the zoning in the subject parcels into conformity. The map here shows the development area for the Highland Green concept outlined in blue there. And the subject parcels in the red, in red with the black hashing, that it shows that the rezoning would take this entire parcel. And rather than having the split zoning that Libby mentioned, it would bring it all into conformity with the R four zoning. And we think that's, that's a very important aspect of this rezoning. We also do want to say that the subject parcels are largely surrounded, as we saw in the current land use map, by single-family homes and vacant lots. And all of the nearby residential zones are R three, R four, or R five, which shows that an additional few parcels of R four zoning would by, by no means be out of conformity with the surrounding context. It would in fact act as sort of an intermediary between a more dense area to the southwest and a more, a less dense area to the north. It's also important to note that the comprehensive plan, future land use designation for the area establishes it as a mixed residential area. And the R four district suits this future land use designation much more appropriately than the, the B three district. And even with the development aside, this is an important, an important reason for supporting the rezoning as the, the zoning would help to implement the future land use designation as it was stated in the two thousand and five comprehensive plan. I also would like to point out that the commercial, future land use designations along Cunningham are of a limited commercial variety. And as such favors more of the type of development that's already there of a limited scale. But it is, that's the way it was worded in the two thousand and five comprehensive plan. The, according to the LaSalle criteria, which we use to justify a rezoning, we can look at the, the first of the criteria, which is, as I mentioned, a statement that the zoning is in compliance and conformity with the surrounding area. It's, as I mentioned, acts sort of as an intermediary, so it's by no means out of, way out of whack with the existing zoning. The second measure concerns the extent to which property values might be diminished following the rezoning. And as Libby mentioned, we would anticipate it would have no, no impact on property values or a positive impact. But we can't really see this bringing property values down at this point. The next two criteria examine whether benefits to the community outweigh any particular hardship that might be brought to the property owner. In this case, the proposed use and is of community benefit and the owner of the property is the city. So both of those would be benefiting the property owner. And in that case, it meets those criteria as well. The next criterion concerns the features of the property that would allow the, the uses within the proposed zone. And the R four district is suited, again, as I mentioned, in the context of the, the surrounding area. And the final principle examines whether the current commercial zoning is a barrier to, to development. And as we mentioned, this proposal has been in the works for over a decade. And as of right now, the commercial zoning is a barrier to the existing residential proposal. So in summary, the R four zoning of the parcels is well-suited to the context. And the rezoning is compatible with the, the LaSalle criteria. And also brings the city closer to achieving a wide range of goals and objectives that are stated in the consolidated plan, the comprehensive plan, the mayor and council goals, and a variety of other documents. The, the rezoning is also, as Libby mentioned, expected to strengthen the applicant's, applications for various grants that they're applying for, which are needed in sort of a timely manner. And the rezoning, again, would help to validate, or would be validated by the future land use designation of the area, regardless of the, whether or not the current proposal ends up going through. And finally, we would like to stress again that the current issue before us is just the rezoning. That's, at this point, as Erin mentioned, the site plan is more of a conceptualization, really, of what could end up being at play. But for the most part, entirely, what we are, what we are looking at tonight is the rezoning. As we mentioned, as the plan commission stated, in terms of public input at the plan commission, three individuals spoke against the proposed rezoning, all of whom live near the subject parcels or have a stake in the surrounding area. And their reasons for opposition included the stated plans for adjacent commercial expansion, perceived property value impact, effect on individuals living on Bar Avenue, among other related concerns. And Erin Smith also spoke in favor of the development and cited numerous community advantages that could stem from it. And the plan commission discussed consistency in their individual discussion, consistency with the proposed zoning and the future land use designation. And also the lack of current development on the sites as zoned, as zoned B three. They also meant, expressed concern about Bar Avenue being a dead-end street and the density of the proposed development relative to the amount of open space there. In total, the plan commission did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. And the suggestion was made that, the mo, the motion included a suggestion that the land-owning properties in the area consider establishing a more effective configuration of parcel ownership through whatever means might be available to enable two points of egress along Bar Avenue and the proposed Highland, Highland Green development. So with that in mind, the city council has options to either accept the proposal as, as stated or decline the proposal as it is put forward. forward in the ordinance. Are there any questions?
Yes, thank you. Any questions for Matt? Is there a motion?
A motion to be adopted and approved. Second?
A motion by Robert, seconded by Smythe. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call?
I don't have one.
I have another discussion. I can't see you, you're right next to me. Bill Brown?
Yeah, I think this is, I mean, this is for rezoning, I, it seems like we should be able to do R3 rather than R4. I'm a little worried that if we approve this and they could come back with a different proposal for, that would be more dense, but I guess we could always say no when it got to that stage. I think the density of this proposal isn't bad with nine one-bedroom units. I'm a little confused why the one-bedroom veterans' units don't, aren't indicated as accessible. You'd think that they, that those would be, or some of them would be. So I guess that's, it's still kind of confusing whether we're talking about the development or the zoning. I know we're talking about the zoning, but we have the development in front of us, so we might as well talk about that some. And then the other question I had about the development was, would this new part also be able to use the existing clubhouse of your existing, so they would go together basically in that?
Yeah, the management, the management of both sites would be combined, and the residents of this new development would have access to all the amenities that are part of the Crystalview site.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next. Thank you both very much. Next we have ordinance number 2015-06-063, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2014, 2015 annual budget. And Elizabeth Hannan, our finance director, is here.
You were provided a draft of this last week. There are a few additional changes, but basically this just revises the current year budget for, for the year that ends on June 30th to match the estimates that were provided as part of the budget document with the changes listed in the attachment.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Any other discussion? Mr. Madigan?
So we're talking about the budget here, right?
We're talking about this year's budget.
All right. So my first question would be, Elizabeth, what in the budget is, what is allocated for payment to MetCAD this year, and how does it differ from MetCAD's requested amount?
When you say this year, you mean next fiscal year?
Correct. Yeah, this budget, yes. So the budget we're considering right now.
Well, the one you're considering now is an amendment to the fiscal 15 budget. The next ordinance is the FY16 budget.
I'll hold my comments.
Anyone else? Okay, do we, did we have a motion on this? Who's the, who's the, Charlie and Eric, okay, yes, I didn't write it down, sorry about that. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, ordinance number 2015-06-064, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2015, 2016 annual budget. Elizabeth?
Yes, so this is the FY 2016 budget for the fiscal year that begins July 1, and this ordinance would approve the proposed budget that you have seen with the changes included in the attachment to the ordinance.
So, one more time. So what is, what is budgeted for MetCAD and what was requested by MetCAD in the 1516 budget?
Yeah, the, in, in the budget, the total budget for MetCAD between the police and fire departments is $614,000 and some odd dollars. The amount that was requested by MetCAD was $708,000, so the difference is about $94,000.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, how do we, how are we prepared to reconcile that difference?
I'd like to talk to that. I think I explained this last time. We've been looking at the formulas, and we think there's some difficulties with the University of Illinois reimbursing for the fire department, and also the formula, I think there's a problem with the City of Champaign as well. So I'd like to get those things resolved. So what we've done is we've, last year we worked out a deal with Champaign that they were asking for another $127,000, and we asked that that be spread out over five years. So we've added another $127,000 to next year's budget plus one-fifth of the repayment of the original $127. So we've gone from less than $500,000 to over $600,000. So I thought we should look at the billing practices and see if we've probably over, I think we've overpaid. So I'd like to work that out before we add any more money to it, because this is a huge amount of money for us.
So has MetCAD said, gee, we'll work with you on that and?
City of Champaign has said they're willing.
They're not going to kick us out?
I don't think they want to kick us out, because then they'd have to pick up our costs. So I think the City of Champaign is willing to talk with us, and we're talking with the university right now. Okay, and we'll report back to you when we find out what the numbers are.
So that's something we can deal with, like with an amendment down the road, is the suggestion then?
Yes. Right. That's my proposal.
Okay, thank you.
I want to amend the budget, so I better move the budget as proposed, and then I'll make, offer an amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson, to approve the budget as proposed, and you want to amend it?
Yes, I'd like to, and I pass this out. This is a revision, this is the flip side of what I proposed earlier in the town, in the township. I'm proposing to return the $75,000 for the floating police officer position and reduce social service funding by that amount in the budget. So it's $75,000 from one into the other.
I'll second that.
Okay. There's an amendment to implement these changes to the original budget for next year. Aaron?
So I want to make sure that I'm clear about this, because starting back when the chief did the presentation, somehow a $67,000 position turned into $140,000 worth of savings. So I'm not quite sure how that happens. I'm not, I'm confused from the very beginning, and now we, so it's a ghost position that we don't have field, and we have that ghost position that was between 60 or 70,000 turned into somehow $140,000, $138,000 worth of savings, and now we want to give $70,000 back to that ghost position. I don't understand.
I'll speak to it, and the chief can probably help me. The chief had a series of cuts, and one of those was a position. Several years ago, because of our overtime costs and because of the regular nature of police injuries, retirements, you know, basically we have four retirements a year and/or positions that are, that are floating open, and because training for a police officer is basically a 15, is it 15 months from start to finish, chief? Roughly, yeah.
Depending on the circumstances.
Yes, depending, yeah, so, yeah, there's a whole process there. So we actually, it actually costs us money to fill vacancies with overtime as opposed to planning a bit and getting a body put into the police academy ahead of schedule. So if we know that somebody's going to retire in six months, we can, we can at least get somebody hired in, and we're paying while they're in the academy and so on, and, you know, they have to, they go through the academy, then they're on the street paired up with somebody, and it's a, if you want to describe the training cost.
Mr. Ammons, there was a breakdown, a line-by-line breakdown that was provided in your packet at least week, last week, that identified every penny that was removed from the $140,000 that we were directed to reduce our budget by. That includes a police officer. We have 68 total employees for this, for the police department. That includes civilian employees. Some of those positions were going to be removed from there as well for certain periods of time. In other words, we were going to do like public works and postpone hiring for some of those positions. So we adjusted our budget to reduce the $140,000 that we were directed to do. Of that, 130 was in personnel. That's not all police officers, it's also police employees. The rest of it was equipment. And again, it was provided last week in your packet.
And, chief, the training part, how long is the start to finish for a typical officer that you have to hire?
Well, from the testing period, the background period, again, that was provided on a timeline in last week's packet, but roughly a year, sometimes a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less, depending on how well the recruit goes through the process and whether or not timing is available. If the police training institute is available at the time, and we can get him in early and we can get the background done, it may not be quite that long. But there's, after the basic academy, there's a field training program, some of which is extended, some of which is accelerated depending on the quality of, of the performance of that recruit, and then there's a probationary period as well. So on average, it's about a year from start to finish, and that's why in 2014 we were offered the opportunity, I don't know if it's a ghost position, but it's an overfill position, an overhire position that allows us to recoup some of that time.
I will say that we have 55 authorized officers, but it's very hard to have 55 working because there are injuries, there are all kinds of things, but that was the request to me from Chief Connolly to have this floating position so that we would have a smoother transition. Now, what we've done to meet our budget constraints is we've held off on hiring people, but we only did it for one position in the police department, because we don't want to cut our number of police. So this is just to restore that position. Aaron, I think you were next.
So, just to your point, I saw that in the packet last week. What I didn't understand about what was presented, and maybe I could have asked last week, was that, from what I understood, there was a breakdown that amounted to counting sick time and a lot of other different things, that I saw all of the breakdown associated or connected to the one position that we call the overhire position. So maybe I was misunderstanding something. Are you saying that the $138,000 that you cut from the budget was in relationship to other personnel, other people within, in your personnel? Is that what I'm understanding now?
Well, quite honestly, I don't really understand what you're asking.
Okay. So of the, my understanding of what I saw yes, last week, was that the position, the overhire position, had a base salary position, and then there were a bunch of other different things added to that, like uniforms, sick time, and various other different things, that after all those things were added, it came to $138,000. But what you're sharing with me right now, it sounds like you're saying that that was in relationship to other positions, not just that position. Is that, is that clear?
Maybe I can try to clarify. So I think the police department's total goal, and I don't have the number in front of me, is as you, was as you said, about $138,000, but the cost of this position was just a, just a few dollars under $75,000. So this was one of a number of cuts that the chief made to reach that goal.
Right. Okay. I don't know what I'm saying, I don't know if I'm speaking another language or something, but I'm asking, of the, of the $138,000, how much of it?
I don't know, Mr. Ammons, I don't have any documentation in front of me. I guess we'll have to look at those documents again, and I can share that information with you that was provided last week, I guess.
So it sounds to me, that's what I'm addressing, is that if I'm wrong, then fine, you know, inform me, but what I understood was that the, the position itself was 67, was 77,000, but when we added all the other different components to that position, the uniforms, the sick time and those things, it sounded to me like all those things, from what I saw, were added up, and it came to $138,000.
For one position?
Yeah, that's what I'm misunderstanding.
No.
This is the position right here, 62, so all those things. So that's the 70,000 right there. See, the salary is here, and then the holiday pay and all that other stuff.
Employee insurance and all those things.
So it was not just a single position that added up to it, it was a couple of other different things. That's what I was trying to make sure that I understood, because it didn't make sense to me when I was looking at it, and maybe I might have a little room for, for error here, being my first time going through a budget. I'm trying to understand how all this works, but as I understood it, it sounded as if basically there was just a, a sort of combining of different things that added up to about $138,000, all in relationship to that one position, and I was very confused about that. Now, that's much clearer, that's not what we're talking about. So that's why I was taking a position with this money, because that's going to be moved back into the police department, because I didn't think there was an actual cut that had been made, so I was concerned about that. Thank you.
Bill Brown?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could clarify what the difference is between an overhire versus just raising the authorized strength to 56 versus 50, we have 55 now?
We do.
And since we've had this overhire this past year, is there somebody in the pipeline already to fill that, or were you holding off to see what we do this year?
Well, we're holding off now. There, we are not filling a 56 position, because we reduced, there still has to be money, as we start the process, let's use January, let's use a timeline of 12 months. There are 55 police officers on the police department right now, including myself, all of the other leadership team, the detectives, the sergeants, the patrol division, 55. If we were fully staffed, we're not, we're actually two down, but 55. Now, overhire, that 56 officer, when we start the process, when we offer him a position where he starts with the police training institute, he will be in the process where he will be getting paid by the city of Urbana through his training period. So we will, we will have to provide funds for that 56 slot. However, by the time he gets through the police academy, we anticipate that one of the 55 will then retire or go out on disability or leave the police department for another police department, a variety of different issues, and then that 56 slot will fill that 55th, that, that last vacancy. Does that make sense?
Okay, so then you wouldn't reinstitute the next training until somebody actually left, or?
Well, actually, we would start that process, that 56 slot over again, because we would start with the recruiting, the testing, the interview process, and so it's a piggyback that keeps us from falling too far behind, because there's such a gap in the amount of time from the initial application till the time that we can put them on the street.
Okay, and then I just, I heard on the news this week that we were supposed to have 80-some officers or something based on our population, because I know sometimes the TV news gets things wrong, because I guess average is two, two per thousand or something, but I- something, but I, there are sixty-six officers working for the U of I and they do cover some of our population. So, I don't know where that quote might have come from, but I'm sure that it wasn't, it wasn't directly from anybody in the know.
And, and we can clarify, I didn't make it, right?
I assumed that. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Erin?
Yes. So, this is what was confusing to me. When I look at a baseline salary of, it said sixty-seven thousand, the things that were reported seemed though, seemed to me as though they were projected costs, right, that would come from this particular officer. And that's what was kind of confusing me. So, sixty-two thousand was the base pay when we started talking about sick leave incentive and stuff like that, right, at a projected cost or an actual cost of thirteen thousand dollars. I didn't understand those things because it sounded to me as if it was this particular officer or some projected cost of sick leave. Can you just help me understand that line item, for instance? It says reduction in sick leave incentive, thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars. And it says this is rarely used by employees since the union negotiated a buyout of fifty percent for their sick leave.
Yes. We had a budget line item that set a certain amount to pay back police officers as an incentive for not using sick leave. When an officer calls in sick, that, that's not specific to that officer. That is for the police department.
Right, okay.
When, when individuals call in sick, it requires other police officers to either work additional hours at a time and a half rate or call other people in on their days off. So, we, we have to try to fluctuate the number of officers on this, at any given time. And that line item that we reduced had a certain amount of funding money in that line item each year because in years past, that's how much we used for that. Because there have been some additional changes in the way that we do things, the number of sick leave hours has been reduced. So, we opted to say, instead of carrying hypothetically fifty, I don't know how much is there, but instead of carrying that fifty thousand dollars in that line item year to year, let's reduce it by eighteen thousand dollars because that's a pretty good guess that we'll be able to give that money back because it's, it, because of the others manipulation that we did, it reduces the amount of sick leave that other officers are using.
Okay. And so, that was some of the stuff that was causing me some, some concern about it because the conversation was centered around a position. And then most of the things that I saw there were, some of them made me think that they were associated like, so this one officer is going to have thirteen thousand dollars in sick time. So, I understand a little bit clearer now of what's going on.
Thanks.
Okay. We have a motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson.
Let's see, I'm, I'm.
With the amend.
I move the amendment.
Okay.
Probably should be voted on.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Madigan to amend the motion. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I was trying to make sure I understood the amendment.
The amendment was to add these, things that Charlie is talking about to the original motion to approve the budget for next year.
So, basically, the.
We're doing this, yeah, this stuff.
Seventy thousand dollars would go back to the police department. Is that what you're saying?
Right. So, seventy-five thousand goes back into the police budget to pay for that police officer. Then we reduce the transfer from the general fund to the social services fund. We reduce the revenue from the general fund in the social services fund, and we reduce expenditures in the social services fund.
So, the number.
Seventy thousand, right?
We reduce it to seventy. The reduction is seventy-five.
So, then we just go through all of the township stuff to raise the social service amount so that we could give the difference to the police department. But the two hundred and forty-five thousand that we have for social service would not be affected by this.
Right.
Exactly. Right.
Okay. And we're not voting on the township right now. We're only voting on the city budget and we will deal with the township in July.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that we were not basically taking seventy thousand dollars and giving it to the police department instead of the social service. So, okay.
Ah-ha. Okay. Any, any questions on the motion as amended? Mr. Madigan?
Question or discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm sure this is going to come as a shock to everyone, but I, I don't support the budget. I know that everyone has tried very hard to bring this thing into balance based on the revenues that are available. But early on, when we were all each individually consulted, my suggestion at the time was make cuts equal to any kind of revenue increases that were going to happen. That, you know, did not happen. We have twice as much revenue increase as we have cuts. I understand that, that's, that was probably a lofty goal. But nevertheless, I continue to believe that each year that we continue to raise taxes and fees on the citizens of Urbana, we will find ourselves in a more and more increasingly difficult situation in terms of funding city government. I know that almost sounds counterintuitive, but it's a fact. You cannot continue to increase taxes and expect the business climate of this community to improve. I know that, I guess what I would support is if there was a long-term vision, if there was a vision for short-term pain, for long-term gain, I could appreciate that and maybe buy in. But I don't see that happening here at all. I don't see any kind of long-term plan to improve the economic environment in Urbana. I think we're waiting for the federal government and the state government to somehow, I don't know, make the economy better, which is just not how things work. Not that we can necessarily impact that on the local level to any kind of serious degree as well, other than to get out of the way of people who want to start businesses, who want to build homes. But they're not going to do that as long as the tax burden is appreciably larger here than it is in our neighboring communities.
Anyone else? Diane?
I intend to support this budget. I, I support the restoration of this police position. I don't think any of us are, are thrilled with this budget, but I think it's the best that we can do at this point. However, I appreciate Mr. Madigan's comments. We do intend, I think, to make a long-term financial plan going forward. I think we would also benefit from an economic development strategic plan, which we really haven't seen. And what's not in this budget and what I really want to see, once we figure out, once we learn what the state's going to do, is going ahead with a facilities plan and programming needs assessment, which is so far overdue that it's, it's bordering on the irresponsible. I mean, we, we need to start planning for the future for the city. We need to be looking at how we're using space. We need to be looking at how people are working together and how to improve efficiencies. And we can't do that unless we actually look at the entire city and all the facilities and, and, and do a plan. But that'll cost money. It's not there now. But we absolutely have to do that in order to, to, to move forward. So, I, I, I'm going to revisit this topic after we see what happens at the state level and see how, how we can start planning on facilities and people. And it doesn't necessarily mean planning to build millions of dollars' worth of new buildings. It's essentially, it's, it's also looking at how we're using existing facilities and how they could be used more efficiently. And we're losing money on the facilities like the Civic Center, so we can be using them better. So, so, long-term, well, sometime over the next year, that's what I'd like to see happen.
Charlie?
Yeah, I won't, I won't get on my subbox about compound interest because that's, but that's, you know, the, the core of why our costs for people keep going up. When we do three, two, three, four percent raises, we drive, we drive things up and we, we drive the costs up. And when the city is people, that's what provides the police, fire, public works protection out there. That's, that's where, that's where money's going. The problem that we have is not so much the city taxes. It's Park District and School District, School District. You know, there's sixty-five percent of the tax burden right there on two other taxing bodies in the city. You know, we're striving to keep our tax rate, at least from the city side, to be comparable to champagne's. And the price of that has been to sacrifice some of this long-term planning that we probably should have been doing. You know, we don't have any money set aside. And I'm going to go a further step than Diane. It's not just the building stuff. It's good VERF planning. It's good building, you know, building fund planning, that sort of thing. So, so, it's, we do, we, we do need to do a very, very complete job. And I'm, I'm hoping that as we get our, a handle on a new financial package, which we're committed to doing this year, that, that we will be, put ourselves in a position where we can address VERF and we can address a real building fund. The, the other issue, of course, is Mike's absolutely right. We, you know, we do need to encourage businesses and so on to, to help Urbana grow. Because what we really need to do is help the Park District and the School District diversify their property tax base. I mean, that's where we're getting nailed. It's that, you know, they're so dependent on property taxes to do what they're doing that, you know, they've, they raised their, their, their rate thirteen percent, and we did not. You know, we've tried to make up the difference with those fees and those other items where, where, where they're a little more targeted, maybe, maybe get up people from out of town and so on. So, yeah, it's really, really difficult. I'll tell you this, you know, in, in all the years I've been on the council, I much preferred when we had a little bit of extra money than not having it. It's really no fun when you don't have any money to do any pet project or, you know, anything like that, or even invest in the future. You know, you know, we could do so much more with things like the boneyard or with our TIF districts if we just had a little bit more, you know, money to put forward into those sorts of things. So, you know, I, I think, I think we're doing the best we can at the moment. I wish we could do better.
Dennis?
And I think the only thing that one might add is that it's impressive, impressive budgeting when we have a situation where we have, are able to retain the employees that we have. We haven't had to reduce or fire anybody or let people go. And we've reduced some employee costs by lack of rehires. But it's a lot more gentle and kind to the, the people in the community if you're not laying people off even at the city building. So, good for us for that.
Bill?
Yeah, I'll add on to the theme of long-term planning. That's kind of what I was going to talk about too, as far as the strategic economic plan. Sounds like a good idea, but even just looking at the TIFs, we know about what kind of revenue we'll be, we'll be getting in. And we could do probably a three or four, five-year plan, similar to the capital improvement plan with TIFs, at least what percentage we want to allow to go to incentives versus capital development and something like that. So, I, I hope we can do more with the TIFs to try to, and with the new TIF, to encourage longer-term planning. I'd say this is my third budget since I've been on the council with, from three different, three different finance directors. And this is the best one so far. So, it's going in the right direction as far as visibility, I think, and, and, you know, getting a better, getting a better handle of what we need to improve on. But I do think that the long-term planning is going to be a big issue that we need to address. As far as, we haven't really gotten back to council goals. And I'd hope that of all those goals, we can help to, we can kind of prioritize them because we have a lot of goals. And I think it would be good if, if we could narrow it down somehow to five or six that we, that are achievable, that we could really work on. And I definitely encourage the long-term financial plan and, and economic plan, development plan to be up there.
Eric?
My summation is going to be trivial compared to my colleagues, but I remember very well how much I was beat up one side of the head by many of my constituents for supporting gambling machines at all. And so, I feel in better balance now that I've been beat up the other side of the head for charging too much for them, charging too much for licensing them.
Okay. We have a, a motion that's been amended. And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, we're up to item number six, mayoral appointments to boards and commissions. Motion by Smythe?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Yes.
I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Was there anybody who might potentially have been appointed who was not reappointed?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't have the library on here, but we'll do that next month.
Well, no, understood. But I, I mean, you know, on the list of all of your appointees, which I didn't have a complete list in front of me and I, I didn't, I didn't go to look it up, was, there wasn't anybody who.
It's on the agenda. Yeah, there.
No, I have, I, I do have the list of everybody whom you did appoint. What I didn't have, what I don't have, what wasn't on the agenda, was anybody who might have been reappointed but whose appointment you're letting lapse. Is there anybody in that situation?
No, we don't normally, we wouldn't normally publicize that.
Well, but.
But I don't, I, we don't have anybody on, you know, on this list. Everybody that, that is on a board and commission is asked if they'd like to continue.
Sure.
And most of them do like to continue, continue. And then we ask for new people. So, you have the reappointments and then you have, well, these are new, the new people are first, and then you have the reappointments second. So, all the people in item six are new people.
No, but, but there are no.
But there's nobody that was pushed out of sight, you know.
No, but, no paid, no paid employees who are not being reappointed.
That's not this item. This is boards and commissions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. So, we have, go ahead. Diane?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the.
This is number, we're on number six. And we had a motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Right, Diane?
I was just concerned when I read the minutes from the planned commission hearing about how they didn't make a quorum to, for two meetings. So, I just wondered, are we now, is the planned commission now fully staffed or, I mean, filled? Or are we still looking for another member on the planned commission?
I think we're still looking for people because they're not on here.
Oh, yes.
Yes, we actually do have one vacancy for the planned commission. If anyone has any suggestions, we'd encourage them to apply. There is one individual who has not yet re-upped, but will be on the agenda next time.
So, one vacancy on the planned commission. Because that's one of our most important commissions. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the appointments to boards and commissions? Would the clerk please call the roll? You actually don't need a roll call for this particular thing. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next is reappointments to boards and commissions. Is there a motion?
So, moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any other discussion on this one? All, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And then we have the really big list, which is item number eight, staff reappoint, staff appointments. So, I think all these people are already on staff.
Right. So, that, so, so this is, this is the one I, I meant to ask a question about. And I apologize for premature expostulation.
Okay.
But the, the, so, so my question is, what, are, are there any, are there any staff members who, who are not being reappointed?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. And we approve these appointments by the mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Madigan seconds it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Madigan. All right. Any discussion about the staff appointments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And if there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.